We'll call to order the September 14th Danby Select Board Meeting. Please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abbott, hands.
Here.
Powers, Fuller.
Present.
Bender.
Present.
And Mrs. Thompson or?
Ms. Thompson.
Ms.
Will read the procedure for remote attendance at select board meetings. Mrs. Thompson was my mother. Anyway.
She was a nice woman, too. I liked her.
Yes. Remote access to select board meetings, while not required by law, is offered in order to encourage access and participation for as many of our town citizens as possible. It is understood that a select board meeting is a meeting open to the public, but not a public meeting per se. Businesses conducted and votes are cast by board members. Therefore, public attendees, in person, out, or remote, who wish to comment on an agenda action item when it is addressed in the course of the meeting, should indicate such intention during the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the rules for remote attendee participation are: Remote attendees will be muted by online host upon joining the meeting, remaining so unless recognized to speak. Intention or desire to speak in order to comment or ask questions will be indicated by use of the hand raising function of the remote platform. People will be recognized in the order in which the hand raising function is activated. Online host will alert the chair to presence of remote questions for participants. Remote participants, when recognized, will unmute their device and identify themselves with clearly spoken first and last name. Comment or question will be limited to two to three minutes, after which participant will be muted. And this time limit will apply to in-person participants as well. General ground rules concerning decorum remains the same as that which is expected of citizens, guests, and board members attending in person. Namely, the speaker will not be interrupted and will not interrupt other speakers. The speaker will treat the proceedings of other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue and not personalities. Procedures for use of the online platform and the above standards will be reviewed at the beginning of each meeting. And our online participants currently are Annette Smith, Chris Hardaway, Terry Parker, Doug White, and Sharon White.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, I will entertain a motion to set the agenda. And under new business, I will be appointing a negotiating committee for the upcoming union contract.
Make a motion.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we will entertain public comment.
I don't know if this is the time or if we could do it afterwards. I have two things I'd like the board to help me address over at the memorial. There's the washout on the retaining wall, which needs to be taken care of, and I would like to see that taken care of and fence put up prior to Veterans Day. That's number one. Number two, that birch tree that's over there, I'd like to, I personally would like to remove it.
Is that on the corner by the bench?
Right. It spreads three directions. If you come from the Masonic Lodge, you can barely see the wall. And I would like to have permission to remove that tree.
Well, you are the man in charge of the memorial, and if you recommend it, I think you should do it. Anybody object?
I need some permission.
Anybody object?
So, you're thinking all three of, I mean, because that was planted not that many years ago, right?
Right. That was planted by the Danby Mountain. It's got three sprouts on it.
Right, right, which they all typically do. It's the in thing with birch.
Taking away from the memorial, I would like to see it removed.
Okay. And you just want to leave nothing there, just grass?
Yeah. I'll cut it down, and then when we're able to pull the stump out, it can't take much.
I know we had talked about filling in the, and time has passed. It's been, what, a month and a half since we took the post out? The biggest problem with that is, I mean, the real best way to do it is, like we had talked about, the concrete truck and shoot some concrete right in there, and maybe the next time it'll hold it. Not guaranteeing that.
I would think if you put some concrete down there and let it seep down into where the hole is, it'll stop it.
Yeah, I wonder if we put like five yard in there and then put a little topsoil on top. We're still thinking that the next time a jetty forms that it may drop, but that piece isn't going to go anywhere. It should be able to hold itself in.
I would say five yards and maybe a few yards of material on top.
Right.
And then a few inches of topsoil.
I mean, I think we could probably work out time where you guys, Steve, could go down with them, and, I mean, we're not trying to finish the concrete. We're just going to have it shoot down into the hole and fill it to make a...
I think you and I ought to make some time to look at it, because I haven't seen what you're talking about.
Yeah. No, it's a pretty simple project. There's a hole, we're going to fill it with cement. And I'm just saying that I don't want to ask these guys to do it when you guys are...
The road crew can do it. It's just a question of how much material we're actually going to use. I don't want to get five yard to find out it's only going to take two.
Oh, no, you're going to need every drop. It'll take the five yard.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this has happened before, and there's apparently something that...
And they're going to charge us for five yard anyways.
That goes underground, that...
So, you might tell order. If you don't, you can pour yourself some more blocks.
They charge you like 300 a yard.
You're going to pay for a minimum of five yards anyway.
Yeah. All right, it's just a matter of what am I going to do with it if I have extra, is all I was thinking.
It's not going to happen.
Yeah. No, and that'll, we'll let that set for a little bit, and then we'll get a little topsoil. Probably bring it in with either lawn tractor or wheelbarrow and dress that top up. The only other thing that we got to think about is, do we want to set that pole at the same time, or do we want to do that after, try to, because my concern is, are we going to fill with the concrete where that pole's, they're going to be right on that same line almost, where, because when we pulled that, remember, it was, it was right on the line.
That pole, the concrete only reached out maybe about, what, 16, 18 inches?
Right.
That concrete. And I don't think we'd want to bring the concrete up above that.
Right.
So, I'd say, you've got to pay for five yards minimum. I think it'll take all of five yards. If five's too much and we only use four, you send the other yard back, paying for it.
Right.
My only thing, concern is the chute we need. We have to ask them to bring enough chute or borrow a chute.
I've actually got chute.
You have a chute?
Yeah, you guys just have to come up and grab it off our truck.
So that we don't drive the truck out onto the ground?
Yeah, they should be able to shoot it right from the...
Bridge.
Bridge. Yeah, let's, I mean, it's not, when's Veterans Day, not for...
11th of Septem, of November.
Yeah, so, if we get that done in the next couple, three weeks, uh...
That would be great.
So, do you want to work with...
I would be happy to help.
Yeah. Do you want to coordinate that with Dan, or have Dan coordinate it with you, so that they come down at a time that you're not in the middle of some other project?
I mean, I'll help coordinate with the concrete end, too, if we, so that we pick a day and get it. I mean, it isn't going to take you guys an hour in the morning to shoot it in.
No, and I just, I need to check on two sections of road that I had a message on today, but I think we should be able to do it next week. Just to be a matter of what comes up between now and Monday. So...
If you want, call me, I'll be there.
So, that would be good.
Can't be next Thursday, I won't be in town Thursday.
I can't do next Thursday either, because I have to leave for a funeral, so...
Couple of weeks would be good.
Well, don't put it off too long. I'd rather get it done sooner the better, because I know what's going to happen. I will forget.
No you won't.
Because Dan will remind you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good.
Oh, and if I may, I'd like to thank the public, make a public thank you for all the help we've received. Over there, there's some of the grass cutting, the flowers, everything. The place looks great, and it's all volunteers. So, I'd like to thank anyone publicly that has helped.
It really looks beautiful.
It does.
Any other public comment? Anybody?
Sean looks like he has a hand.
Well, Sean's on the agenda.
I'm on the agenda, remind the public comments.
You're on the agenda, you're special.
I'm special. Trust me, I am special.
Okay, going once, going twice, going three times, no more public comment. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the select board meeting of August 10th.
I'll make a motion.
That wasn't there, but I'll second it if you...
Okay. You seconded it, you read through the minutes. The only thing I would point out, there's typographical error on the line under public comment, Matt Blauen, issues with access to the, that should be assessors, S's instead of C's.
Do I know that?
Ray can take care of that quite easily. Okay. We got a motion to adopt those minutes. All in favor? Aye. Motion carried unanimously. And now, Mr. Towes.
Yes. So, I'm here to talk about a tree. I talked to Steve about it briefly. I don't know if you stopped by and looked at it?
I did not.
I asked Steve.
All right. I asked our tree warden to...
I asked Steve to look at it.
Yeah, I looked at it. It's a tree.
It's a tree.
Big and...
Yeah.
Live or dead?
It's live. Somewhere between 95 and 110 feet tall, four foot through on the stump, and leaking water about 35 feet up. So, I'm assuming it's got red rock. It's to the point now where it has six to eight inch limbs falling out of it on a pretty regular basis. It has a lot of middle, top dead in it, and I think it's just time for the tree to go.
What kind of a tree is it?
Pine.
Oh, it's a white pine?
Presumably, yeah.
Now, it's in the towns right away?
It is.
And is there power lines there?
There's none.
Wow.
There's none. Unless it falls dead, dead south down the road.
Now, what if this falls dead east, southeast?
Uh, if you come up with a compass, any way it goes other than due north or south up and down that road is going to take somebody's house.
So, east, though?
It's just going to take somebody's house. It's nothing we can, nothing, any of us here can just walk up and cut down. I mean, I'm a fairly competent tree cutter, and there's no way I would dare do it. I'm sure Steve's a pretty competent tree cutter, and I don't know if you'd do it or not. I got an estimate from Tom Johnson to come in with a climber and have somebody climb it. He came in $2,000 for climbing, cutting, and brush removal. So, that would leave the tree for you guys.
Have you looked at it, Steve?
I looked at it. It's a big tree, and it does have dead in it.
Where's this tree?
Cascades.
Shall we get some other estimates like we did for the tree down by Tom Griffiths?
Well, if we're going to consider doing it, then we have to have street quotes on it, because it's going, you've already got $2,000.
Yeah.
And that's with the town removing the body wood.
Mm-hmm.
As far as the town tipping it over, mm, I don't know. The only way I'd do that is if we had a machine there big enough to make sure it...
To hold it and move it.
To guarantee that it went the direction I wanted it to go.
The only place to put it, doing it that way, is north in the road, and it's going to break the road when it comes down.
Um, well, I guess the only thing I think we can do is, we'll look at it and figure out what, I mean, it's nothing we can give you an answer on this moment, how we're going to achieve it. But I think if the town's going to do it like Steve said, we'll have to get estimates through the town.
Do you have that estimate in writing from trees? Okay. So, probably if you call him, he's looked at it. We could get that one easily, get that one court, and that outfit, Advanced Property Management, that did the work down by Tom Griffiths. You were happy with them?
I'm not sure. Is there even in business anymore?
I have an independent climber that's really good. It feels like his information.
Because that was, uh...
Danger. Yes, yes.
Yeah, no, I mean, we'll take an estimate from anybody that has...
He used to work for round court.
I'm not even coming up with either name for him.
Well, I guess, so we don't sit here and hoe and hum things, we'll get some estimates and, and we'll definitely get back to you.
I'm going to kill him.
Thank you.
On it.
I didn't give one. I'm pretty sh...
Yeah, go ahead.
They did a tree for you, right?
A lot of branches.
Yeah, and you worked with them.
I had the charred roads. Those are the flower guys, didn't I?
He went, uh, back to...
Yeah, I mean...
No, I think we're going to get it taken down. We just got to figure out the route to go.
Like South America.
Yeah.
And he took his nephew to the big thing with him.
No, we'll, um, we'll start working on the project this week. Put down his list. All right.
Good. Yeah.
That's all you want to talk about?
That's all I want to talk about, unless you've got anything else to talk about.
All right. Thank you.
Roadside mowing looks excellent.
Yes, thank you. You guys have done a nice job on the dirt here.
The ditching looks good on our road. About time.
Thank you, that's nice to hear.
Yeah, no, they appreciate hearing the good stuff as opposed to complaining.
They did a great job this year.
Yeah, we're trying.
Thank you for fixing that culvert that fell over, the cement thing. I appreciate that, too.
Yeah, pretty funky after cement, yeah, after cement, very clear staples.
Yeah?
Right in that culvert.
There you go.
Right in that culvert. Hope Josh doesn't come around when I'm doing it.
Josh is busy.
He does watch TV, though.
I know. Thanks, guys.
Okay, so our next item of business is to appoint a forest fire warden and a deputy warden. And for quite a long time, we have had Ken Abbott Senior and Ken Abbott Junior as warden and, I believe they call it deputy warden.
And I assume they both still want their positions?
And I think they are rather fond of their positions.
Well, when I'm going to make the motion that we nominate, I nominate Ken Abbott Senior as town forest fire warden and Ken Abbott Junior as deputy town forest fire warden.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? I don't hear any. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. And then we move on to the road commissioner's report.
All right. Well, let's start off with, if you don't mind, the winter sand quotes that we got.
We only got one.
Yeah, we got the Pike, but we did get a vert, or you did get one from...
Yeah, I did get one from...
But it was quite a bit higher, so we, from Wallingford.
From Wallingford, yes. Yeah. That's going to say SLC, but...
Yeah, so, we, we're going to get the sand, winter sand, from Pike Industries for $8.30 a ton for our winter sand this year. I'd like you to sign that when you get a chance.
How much a ton was it? Eight twenty-five?
We've got a few different projects still in the mix. We are, we've got the Lily Hill Bridge project still going on. The only thing on that project, we got setback a little bit with the flood related stuff. So, right now, we're thinking that we may ask for the extension, because that's a grant Did you finish the west side ditching?
We have Little Village about 90% done, and we've been working on the brush on Green Hill down towards Hauser's Place. And we still need to do ditching there, but we had to move up on the Cascades to do that wing wall repair, and while we were there, we ditched that, and right now, we're working on Calvin Hill.
And other than that, they've been trying to keep, I mean, what's Randy on, his third cutter? You guys are on your third roadside?
Yeah, Randy, on a few roads, is on his third pass.
So, and we've got our winter sand planned together, so they're going to start hauling that on fill-in time, when they have a few hours at the beginning or end of the day before their major projects. And...
And what about the hours? Are they going to continue the way they are now for a while?
No, we're going, the end of the month.
October 1st, we're going back to five days a week.
Okay.
Unless it goes to snowing, and then it'll be sooner.
And that's our current project, Dan. School post office culvert, that's new to me. What do we...
Um, I've had a number of complaints over the years, and I measured it from the center line of the road. The culvert is in town property. When you pull into the post office, you go over quite a bump, and it's narrow. And one of the people that mentioned to me about this whole deal was the school. And they're thinking that it should more or less be like one, one open driveway there instead of the two driveways with that big hole in between it.
Well, the problem is, is this is all private property, even though it's in our right-of-way. That's a, that's culvert, is, it'd be like us doing a culvert of any driveway. All culverts of driveways are in our right-of-way. But for us to go onto private property and do any projects, I mean, the school, we could probably do, even though the, but post office is owned by somebody that...
Yeah, management company.
Yeah. So, I think anything that, and they own right to the corner of that school driveway, I believe.
Do they?
Yeah, because...
Since it's a dangerous driveway.
It is.
Narrow, and it's like tipped in the wrong direction. It doesn't go out on both sides, it just goes out on the one side.
Yeah, and I think, well, it got worse when they put the post office in, remember? Because they put that culvert and ditch in there, and it never used to be like that. But that was only 40 years ago, so we've dealt with it since. But, yeah, the driveway to the school, we were going to fix that the last time we paved that, which was...
A while ago.
A long time ago. It was Margot and Dad were on the board, so, um, I, I think it could be changed with a different approach, you know, but I, it would be nice if they would, but I, I don't know if you want to talk to the owners of the post office and see what their thoughts are about changing the entrances there. But that is...
So, you're saying the culvert would be at their expense?
Well, it is their culvert. So, if we start doing culverts, you might open up a Pandora's Box where everybody wants us to do their culverts.
Is that coming, Mike?
I mean, I'm all in favor of any safety changes we can do to the school, but I'm 90% sure that that property line is right there, is why we never tweak that corner. I could be wrong on it, but I, if we could find out where that is, and if, even if they would let us tweak that driveway a little bit, I don't know if I would really want to get involved with their driveway. You got a great idea, but now we're kind of mixing. Beth's going to make us go do hers after, and... Yeah, it, I would, I would...
It's interesting, because it's not like the US government that owns that building.
Right, it's private, yeah. And they get a nice rent, so they...
Yeah.
But, yeah, no, I, I mean, I don't know how you want to approach the...
Um, well, I think the first thing, and I'm willing to do some homework on it, is to look at the deed and see where the boundary line is.
Yeah, and I mean, we can always discuss just the approach to the school, and I think we're getting late in the year on that, but...
Oh, yeah, and I don't think we have money in the budget.
Steve, you can do that next week, right?
I don't think we have money in the budget for it this year, but I just wanted to get the conversation going.
Yeah, no, I mean...
We do our budget.
I'm sure we can look at something to try to make it a little better coming in and out.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on the road commissioner's report?
I don't have anything unless Steve wanted to talk about anything.
We should discuss salt a little bit, shouldn't we?
Oh, yeah, we do have salt.
Because I do need to order a load of salt before we start hauling.
We have the Cargill quote for $90 a ton, which is just steel, isn't it? Jesus. And you got one from...
From Appalachia for $95, $40.
I guess, as we did last year, we got a little bit from...
I would like to get some from Pete, just to keep my front door.
And then, because the problem is, the, the salt shortages that they come up with right in the middle of the year can sometimes hurt us, and the extra $5 a ton really doesn't mean anything to us when we have roads that are icy. So, we'll, we'll sign with both of them and get a little bit from each one of those two.
Sounds good.
And the only other thing that I have to add is, this week, I've gotten Larry's truck and new trailer undercoated.
Oh, nice, with that fluid film.
With the fluid film. We're going to wait on Randy's truck, because we have an appointment October 2nd at Ten Co. to have that hydraulic pump looked at.
Oh, wow. He got it in that quick.
Right.
Nice.
Randy didn't want to get it all slimy for them to work on, so...
I'm glad they can get in that quick.
Me, too.
I was thinking they were going to kick that one down the road, but, nice.
Good. Do we need a motion on the salt?
Um, I mean, I'll make the motion that we get, we sign with Cargill, and we, Pete doesn't even sign, does he?
No, we ordered a few load from Pete.
And that we'll get salt from Cargill, and we'll get a little bit from Apple.
Appalachia.
Appalachia.
Is that kinetic?
What's that?
Is that kinetic?
Appalachia. It's way, it's, we've got an invoice from them.
I spelled A-P-A-L-A-C-H-I.
Oh, you're asking the wrong person.
Well, I'm right here for that.
It's probably A-P-P.
Yeah, I mean, two Es, two Es at the end.
Oh.
E-E now.
G-C-H-E-E.
Brad will correct it next month if it's wrong.
I'll have to see what their invoice says. I don't know, just see what their invoice says. Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's made in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You have that thing for me to sign?
I think, is that the only one we had or is that...
I think that's the only one we have.
All right, let me sign it.
Did you sign one for Pike too, right?
I did sign one. Pike, that's right here.
So you can now start tomorrow morning?
Yeah, let's...
Yeah, tomorrow morning.
You can now start tomorrow. I got things to do tomorrow morning.
Sign the warden things there and there. Okay, any other road business?
Nope.
No?
I don't have any.
Old business, any old business? Okay, new business. Our contract with the union that represents our road crew and assistant clerk and transfer station attendant is coming up for renewal the first of the year. So it's time to start looking at the contract and enter into negotiations. I've been in touch with Ray Bettis, who is the union contact. And it's time to name two members of the Select Board to deal with negotiations. And if there's no objection, I would like to appoint Tom Fuller Junior and Ken Abbott Junior.
No objection from me. I'm assuming you asked Kenny?
Yes, I'm willing to do that. So, um, that's how that will go. Any committees, the chair of the Select Board is an ex-facile member, so if for some reason you can't make a negotiation session...
I don't want you to negotiate. I really don't want to.
I'm too kind. But I, you know, I would fill in if there was a, a meeting that couldn't be made. But we don't want to get into a three-member thing because then we have...
A meeting?
Yeah.
Well, I'm usually in town, so I'd go for Tom.
Right. You don't even get to come to the other side.
I don't.
Who's it, Clapp?
It's going to be Randy and Larry.
Not Clapp?
Nope, Randy and Larry.
You're going to bring extra pizza then?
I'm not bringing pizza. I'm not part of it, so...
Okay, so that is done. And is there any other new business? Well, in that case, I want to...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There we go.
I'll second.
All righty. All those in favor of adjourning at whatever time it is?
7:30.
7:30. I missed my bet by three minutes. Okay, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Thank you all for attending.